Recording?
Recording.
Okay. This is a meeting of the Hand, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, January 25th, 2021, 6:00 PM. The meeting will be conducted remotely using video conferencing technology as provided for in the Governor's Emergency Order of March 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are blessed. One day stands. Under God. Under God. With liberty and justice for all. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? If so, raise your hand or send something through chat or whatever. Seeing nothing. We'll begin the meeting with our minutes. Oh, excuse me, I have to take attendance because we're doing it remotely. So, John Flynn?
Present.
I see him. Okay. Mary Ellen Glover?
Present.
Okay. Bob Markle?
Present.
Am I muted?
No, I can hear you.
No. Pam Courtney? Pam Courtney? And Don Davinfort's here. Okay. The first item on the agenda is the minutes.
Pam will be on.
Excuse me, Bob?
Pam will be joining the meeting. When I left her tonight.
Okay.
Around 4:30. She said that she'd be joining the meeting, so. Just a little.
Okay. All right. So, we have a bunch of minutes to go through here. So, the first one is the May 4th, 2020 minutes.
On the back of page two, the last paragraph, TA salary line item. It says, the end of the sentence, on the end of the first line says, "We are looking for," I think it should say, "we may be looking for."
No, I read that as continuation as, "as when Marco leaves and we are looking for," as all one run-on thing.
Yeah, but it's the rest of the sentence that's the problem. We are looking for a new full-time TA. We don't know that we're doing that yet. We may be still a part-time or it may be a full-time. The sentence says, "and we may be looking for a new full-time TA."
That's what we said. That's what the town meeting voted, a full-time TA.
Right.
Okay. All right. I misspoke, I guess.
Okay, it's just, it's just the run-on, you know, "as when Bob leaves and we are looking." At that point, if you're saying we reconsider, okay. But that was the statement at that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Anything else on that one? Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May 11th, 2020.
Hey, Bob, are we recording?
Yes.
Normally, it says rec up in the corner.
Mine says recording. Mine says recording.
Okay.
I see it on mine too, John. May 11th, 2020?
Page three. Board of Health.
Three.
Three. Board of Health. It says face mask penalty period. I don't think there was any, I would probably just delete that.
Yeah, we didn't do any penalty.
We didn't do any penalty, and I don't, it might be just a title to the section, I guess, or something, but it doesn't make, it doesn't need to be there.
Yeah. Right.
Will to approve as amended?
Um.
Second?
Yeah, just. Okay. Second. Yeah. I just had to check the other pages.
All in favor?
John, aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Donald, aye. Okay.
Mary Ellen, aye.
Oh. Mary Ellen, okay. August 17th, 2020. I wasn't there. Where was I?
Yeah, I was a bit late, I think.
You were greatly missed.
On page two, under dispatch update. This is a minor thing, but the 1234th line, "we talk, discuss this." The word "talk" has to be deleted. Dispatch update. Third line, uh, the 1234th line. "Every time we talk, discuss this."
Talk or? Yeah, you mean talk or discuss this, or same difference?
Just take "talk" out every time we discuss this.
One or the other. Yeah, I agree.
Anything else?
I didn't see anything.
Motion for approval?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor? I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Aye. Mary Ellen.
Next one is December 14th. 2020.
I saw nothing. I think it's fine.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor? Donald, aye.
Donald, aye.
Mary Ellen, aye.
December 30th, regular meeting. That's just kind of like going into the executive session, in a quick executive session.
So, it's, that seems okay.
Second.
Motion?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor? Donald, aye.
Aye, John.
Mary Ellen, aye.
Okay, the December 30th, 2020 executive session.
I did not get any.
I don't have a copy of that.
I don't see that. I didn't get it, I don't think, or some, or it didn't come, whatever.
All right. All right, defer that to next week?
Sure.
Yeah.
They'll defer it to next week?
Yes.
Okay. January 11th, 2021, regular session.
Do not have a printed copy. I do not have a printed copy, Don.
Okay.
Of the 11th, January?
Want to defer that till next week as well?
If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah. Okay. So, we're going to defer the executive session of the 30th, December 30th, and the regular meeting of the 11th until next week.
Yes.
Right?
And is it possible, is it possible that we could get these minutes within the next week or two after the meeting? Because it's much easier to remember what's happened and the wording and whatever without having to go back to the zoom. And I think it's more informative for the public, anybody who's interested in reading them. I think we tried to get caught up, but we don't seem to have caught up or something. So, maybe that message can be relayed to Pam by Mr. Markle or?
I'll discuss that with Pam tomorrow. We are nearly caught up, and once caught up, you'll be receiving the minutes of the prior meeting within a week or two. So, once caught up, we're going to stay.
The only reason I had concern was because the dates aren't consistently missing. You know, there's a missing here, a missing there, different months, different dates. But, okay, thank you.
Right. We're getting there. Did any word of the dispatch services update?
Yes. I had a call today from the town administrator in Wilbraham. He said that the Board of Selectmen in Wilbraham are positive about the IMA, but that they will not take action tonight. Remember, I had mentioned to you that they had planned to take action tonight. The problem is that their town council has not returned. Has not reviewed it and returned it to them. He checked today, apparently, and for whatever reason, their town council just simply hasn't even looked at it. But I was asked to convey that they're very positive, and they are hopeful about voting on the IMA next Monday.
Okay. Bob, could you send me an updated copy? Because I think I mentioned before, I can't seem to find an updated copy in my email. Maybe that's part of the, I think the board would all appreciate an up-to-date copy.
And did you?
That might be part of the problem. I know you asked me before about that, and I thought I said it.
Did you ask him about the two wordage usages or to bring those to the board's attention?
I did. I had sent him a message last week about those words which are of concern to you. So, that also went down to town council.
And so, she's going to review to see if, and she's going to say they're either okay or they're not okay? And then, or what are we?
Or what the town council is going to do. Their town council, that is.
Right.
Other than we expect, here's Pam. We expect that they'll get it back this week and take it up on Monday night.
Well, I feel strongly that that wordage should really be changed if we're going to have to rely on it later. Making every effort doesn't.
Well, what would you like to put in there?
Will do.
What word would you like to put in there?
A definitive word, "will do." I don't have the document in front of me right now, but I know that significant effort isn't, I mean, significant effort can be anything. There were two of them like that, that were very.
You said reasonable.
Very fuzzy.
Problem.
Reasonable, it'll be, they'll make a reasonable, you know. So, reasonable is in the eye of the beholder. It's not, you know, it'll either be such a, some percentage of accuracy, or with, it's got to be defined if you're ever going to use it as a, as an issue. If you're never going to, you know, if the issue may never arise, but if it does, you'd like to be relying on sound definitive wordage, I think.
And the other one was, if I recall, that they would make every effort to.
Every effort.
Substantially.
Substantially.
No, every effort. I thought, but I don't know.
Right, it was substantial, yeah.
I'll have to.
No, it was substantially, the first one was. The first one was substantially, and the second one was reasonable.
Right.
So, it said that the service would be substantially the same as the hamlet.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
Don, was that?
Make every reasonable effort. Right.
Don, was that language from some of the other IMAs that you looked at from other districts? Am I coming through?
You may not have heard.
I'm sorry, John, it was a question?
Don, is that, is that language that came from some of the other IMAs from other districts?
Yeah, that language came, actually, that language came from the agreement we had with East Long Meadow to come here.
Okay.
So, somebody wrote that. We wrote that, or they wrote that, or?
We wrote that. Right. So, it's pretty much the same as the other ones, but we can, we can look at it as long as we know what wording we're looking to put in there. And you suggested us to put in "will do" or "shall" or something like that.
Something that's defined. It can be, it can be, you know, if reasonable effort, if that reflects 85% compliance or 95% compliance, or if it's, if it's something measurable, or it's got to be, it's got to be something that you can rely on, and everybody picking it up would know what that meant. That's my position, I guess.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. And also, we received a letter from Mr. Smith representing the dispatch committee with two, with two warrant, what two warrant articles they want to place on there. And I would suggest that we send that letter to our town council for review.
Well, am I correct that they can put an article on the warrant as long as they get the number of signatures?
Yes.
Well, am I correct?
Yes, correct.
Right? And that threshold is low for, that threshold is low for the annual town meeting, right?
Ten.
Ten signatures.
That's what I thought. Okay. And, and so, our town council would be reviewing it for, I mean, she can't say you can't put it on, can she? Or can she?
No, no, she can't.
Then her purpose in reviewing it would be to give us some guidance relative to whether it was legal. Should it pass or legal to discuss or? Okay.
That's what town council would do. If we receive a citizen's petition with 10 signatures that are valid, then I'm required to put it on the warrant word for word without making any changes at all for even punctuation or spelling.
That's what I thought.
Grammar.
That's, that's what I thought you had to do. So, I wondered what the town council purpose would be because if.
The town council's purpose is that Mr. Smith, that the town council's purpose is that Mr. Smith alleges that we're violating the law.
Oh, I see. Okay. And, but he can still put it on, right?
By not having a line, by not, by not having a line.
With the amount of money. Right, I got that. So.
Right.
Okay, so if she says, yes, that is the case, he is violating the law, that would just give us, that's just what we would stand up at town meeting and say, according to our town council, he's violating the law. He would still be able to put the vote through, right?
What are you talking about? What are you, what are you talking?
He's going to bring the warrant, he's going to bring the warrant to the town meeting, regardless of whether.
Yeah, so we need to know, the thing we need to know is if we have to have a separate line item, putting $125,000 in there. Because, because the Wilbraham folks said that they need to bill us, so.
Right.
Mr. Smith's contention is that we have to have a line item that says $125,000.
Right.
And then the town can vote on that. They can vote on the $125,000, or they can vote on $500,000 and raise their taxes by that much.
Right. I would say that you saw the two questions he had there.
Yeah.
One, I think, goes along with what you said, Don, i.e., a line item to cover the, so to speak, payment to Wilbraham. I, line two, number two, to me, makes no sense. Because the, you already vote a line item budget at the town meeting, and these are line items that are currently in the town meeting. If anybody wants to modify those amounts, they raise moderator calls on them, and they change the amount. So, to have a warrant, a, for number two to see and raise and appropriate employee benefits, training, just raise your hand and modify the number. It doesn't, I'm not quite sure of the purpose of number two. I can see as you say, number one. But.
Yeah, so I just want Rose to look at it and see where we need to go with this.
Definitely.
And I'd rather have her counsel on it than us trying to figure it out.
I would, I would agree with that. Now, I wonder, now I wonder if the treasurer would not have a position on this.
We have a raised hand.
Well, we can ask him too.
I mean, he deals with that every day, and, you know, she's, she'll know the law, but he'll know the finance of it, I suppose.
I'm not sure the relevance of the treasurer myself, but I guess Jim wants to speak.
John, an answer to your specific question. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, an answer to your specific question, John, is that was put on there just as a purpose of timing. If the, the sequence of events and warrant articles may make it that we've already passed beyond item two, which would be the annual budget before those, before that question becomes relevant. So, it's just a, it's just a placeholder. If, if there is a motion to make changes in the line item, let me go back. You're going through the line items one at a time. So, you get to line item six, I think, is employee benefits. So, at that point in time, there hasn't been a line item for 57.10 that I'm proposing. So, if you get to 57.10, the moderator can't go back to six without some sort of purpose. So, I put it in there for that fact. It's just a matter of timing. If it's, if it's moot by the time it comes up, then the motion would just be to take no action.
Okay. I see your thought.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Anything else on that?
At this point.
All right. The next item is, next item is the gaming commission funding crosswalk?
Yes. Pam put out a message to all the administrators in central and western Massachusetts, a tremendous list, asking if they have done crosswalks, blinker lights, and so forth recently, and could they provide any information? So, we did get some information from a couple of locations. They've done one in Great Barrington, and I talked to the town administrator there, and they did a very good one in Middleborough. And long and assured of it is, in order to have a blinker light solar-powered, where you have a box where the person wanting to cross the street can push a button, and it will cause the blinking to occur, as well as a crosswalk, similar to one of the crosswalks that we showed you recently. Cost there is $16,000. If we wanted to purchase one of those digital radar speed monitoring devices, the cost of those varies, but we can certainly accommodate everything we need for, we want to take the more expensive digital monitor somewheres in the range of $30, $31,000. So, I think the answer would be the, we can go forward with that if the board wants to. And the police, police chief Farnsworth recommended that we acquire several more of the digital speed monitoring devices on wheels that we can move around. I'm sure you've seen them, which would not only monitor speed in some of the other parts of town, but also which could be used, let's say, at town meeting time, to read out a message similar to the signage that we use. So, they have dual purpose, and they can be, I guess, there's a handheld device that can be programmed, so.
Well, that would take care of some of the concerns we've had from other parts of town, Don, with speeding on Raymond Drive, et cetera. I think, like I mentioned last week, as long as we get Mary Thurlow from the state to sign off on it. Right, that's the key part there. That they'll honor our invoice, if you will.
But. Bob, the question I have is, did they mention, was it successful? Did it help on cutting down whatever, you know, problems they had with crossing streets there in those towns?
I guess we didn't get to that question. I do know that police chiefs will tell you that those digital radar units are very, very effective. When you see the speed that you're traveling, positioned very near a speed limit sign, it does cause typical motorists to slow down. That's why they become so popular.
Okay.
I didn't ask the, actually, in one of the towns, I talked to the town administrator, and then the other one, I talked to the assistant to the administrator who was not in his office and got the information. I didn't ask if they thought that it had been effective. I think the focus that I have is on safety. In other words, when someone wants to cross over to the grocery store or vice versa, we want to make sure that motorists who are traveling 35 or 40 miles an hour can see the crosswalk and can see a flashing sign, as well as having a digital readout telling them how fast they're going. I think that would be, that would maximize the safety.
And what would you envision the, what would you envision the time to, to do this project, Bob?
I was told by one of the company, by the way, I sent you. Let's see, I sent you this quote today from Permaline. He told me that they, they work, and this is, this is the bottom line for them. It's 19,000 if we take their digital monitoring, radar monitoring system, which I don't particularly like. It's 16,000 otherwise. I talked with him today, and he said that they do it right through the winter. So.
Yeah. Did they? Okay. Do we have to, is that road, is that a town road there? Do we have to get any kind of approval from the state or anything to do that?
I believe that's, that's a state road. Isn't it Route 83?
No. No.
No?
No. No.
In the summary's part, the summary's right part of it? No.
No.
Well.
So, I mean, we wouldn't need to, we wouldn't need to get the DPW's, the state DPW's approval or anything like that to put a crosswalk and a light there.
I will check with them, but if you are agreeable to a system like this, I'll take the next steps, and I'll be in touch with Mr. Thurlow, and also with the state, see if they have any, any concerns. It's probably a state road.
Well, there's, there's state roads, and there's state roads. This goes back into, no, seriously. There are numbered roads that are part of the state system, and then there are roads that are overseen by the state. Then I see Jim popping in. Jim may remember during the flooding part, we got reimbursement because the roads were, so to speak, labeled by the state as state roads, even though they don't give us any money for them. They just like to call them their roads.
And sometimes when a state road enters a town, it becomes the town road for a period for a certain length of road, and then it becomes a state road again. So, we'll have to clarify that. But if you like this as a way of spending at least part of the sum of money that we have, we can, we can take the next steps.
Yeah. Well, I certainly like it as a way of spending part of the money, and I would recommend that you take the next steps and, and then look into the digital radar thing more extensively so we can get, you know, that could be a piece of it down the road.
I have, I have that information as well. The radar signs that are sizable and easily read range from 17 to $21,000 apiece. So, if we would buy two or three of those, we would be consuming much of the $100,000 if you bring in the cross, crosswalk as well and the blinker.
If Permaline could give you maybe some references from some other communities that have had them installed for a couple of years, I think that would be key.
That's it.
Yeah.
Well, Permaline did the, the Middleborough project. I also have the name of a company that did the Great Barrington project. Those were the two responses that we got. But, you know, we can do, do some more work before we make any final decisions.
Yep. Okay. All right. Anything else on that? All right. Police chief search?
I did send you a copy of the ad that I prepared. Unfortunately, that came in the mail that you didn't receive, but I resent it.
I got the job description. I didn't see the ad. Let me check.
Yeah, the job description is in the, is in the packet, and the ad is, was sent via email. I can, I can bring it up here if you want to read it on screen. I can, I can bring it up here if you want to read it on screen.
Go ahead.
Okay, that wasn't it. Those are smart goals. Here we are. Boilerplate first paragraph, boilerplate second paragraph. Third paragraph is, is probably one, we might need some decision by the board.
Yeah, I don't see it yet. You still got the smart.
I don't. You don't see what I'm seeing here?
I see the smart goals still.
All right, let's just get out of here. And smart goals. Let me read it to you. I can make one more effort to try and
Really. Really not keen on the reading. You sure you can't share it on the screen, Bob?
Okay. You see it? Are you not able to see this now?
I don't see it on the screen yet, no.
It came through on my email, so it must have come, it might be through on your emails too, if you can open your email while you're doing this.
What was the date of the email, Mary Ellen? Do you know?
Oh, I don't have it because I printed it off.
Here we go. You should be able to see that.
Now we can see.
There we go. Yeah, that's good.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so first paragraph boilerplate, second paragraph boilerplate. Third paragraph is where we might want to do some wordsmithing. A full-time position require bachelor's in criminal justice or related discipline, several years of progressively responsible experience or preferably a master's degree in criminal justice or related field, five years of progressively responsible experience or any equivalent combination of education and experience. Also, you know, we want command experience. You can have command experience or not. And I think we have pretty strong credentials above that. Five years of progressively responsible experience. That power, that sentence there would, would eliminate patrolmen from applying. I don't know if you want to do that or not. In other words, you have to be a sergeant to do it. I put within the Handen Police Department because if we don't have that in there, then I think this ad would be perhaps someone from the outside would would want to submit. I thought that the preference for the Board of Selectmen was to focus on members of the Handen PD, salary negotiable and send resume reference letter of interest by email by February the fifteenth. The truth is this, we have three members of the Handen Police Department who have indicated interest.
All right. Yep, go ahead. All right, any comments on this?
Oh, there's a hand raised, I thought.
Well, it's a fairly generic job description. It gives us a lot of latitude. I would say what Bob's proposing is to, if I can paraphrase, look internally first. And honestly, if you don't find somebody that makes where you go, you take it further. And there's nothing wrong with that approach either. Fortunately, we have Chief Marquesi here who was going to hold the fort ably. And honestly, if you went that two-step approach and it took an extra month, we're not in bad shape.
My feeling is if you have a department that has a bad culture or needs significant change, typically I would look to hire someone from the outside. If you have a department that's functioning well, and I have to tell you that having been here since September of nineteen, I have not received a single complaint about a member of the Handen Police Department. So I am, I think I can say with some certainty that the culture is not on the, on the negative side and that hiring from within would be appropriate.
Certainly worthy, worthy of consideration.
And and if we are dissatisfied with the candidates, then we can always advertise
Right.
externally.
Mary Ellen, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I think I I would agree with John that the, the, it's, it's a generic, it's a generic posting and so it gives you a lot of leeway, you know. It's, this is preferred or some other experience or whatever. So I mean, there are words in there that allow you to do, you know, to do whatever you want. The, whether we apply, whether we advertise internally or internally and externally, the only concern that I would have is if you, if you do it just internally and you don't take any of the people and you go externally, is that going to hurt morale? As opposed to if you did a broader review initially granting all the internal people an interview for sure, but you know, if that would be better for morale within the department because you don't know what the future holds. That's, that's, that would be my only concern. Either way, I can go, you know, I think either way can work. But it works better if you appoint one of the internal people than if you don't appoint one of the internal people, I think.
Chief Marquesis has joined us.
Yes, good evening.
Hi.
I think internal would be a first step, a logical first step, as I've heard here. And reserving the right to go out if you do not see a candidate that you're willing to offer the job to. I think in a department this size, you've got some good officers that may not be at the rank of sergeant with the amount of, of openings in your, in your promotional system, you may have to interview. Being small because of the department, I think limiting, limiting inside would work and accepting from anyone with, whether it's five years or whatever you pick as a, as a term on the job at any rank might be an option for you. And going outside, you could end up with quite a few applications that, that you'd have to go through and interview. And that would, it would be my, my recommendation, you'd make that your second step if you didn't see what you wanted internally. And I do, I do echo in my short time here what, what town administrator said that you got some good people in that department. I think they're worth a look.
We have a hand raise also, Don.
Go ahead.
Oh yeah, this is Ted. I would just be concerned about having, I, I'm not knowing the officers by any means, but by having a college degree requirement in the, in the job, I don't really think is necessary and you know, I don't know if the, any of the policemen that we have right now have that kind of degree.
I, I think the board has flexibility. I think we, you know, this, as, as has been pointed out, this is a generic job description that you find. Yeah, you find it, this generic job description, but the board has flexibility to appoint someone based upon not just educational background, but experience as well, a combination of the two. And I use the word preferred there, I think, certainly for the master's degree. So I, I don't, you know, the chief, the interim chief and I had a conversation today. As I said, I spent, I spent quite a few years teaching in, in college and I don't think that having a college degree is particularly relevant to good leadership. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's, you know, your ticket in the door, but good leaders typically are people who've had experience and who understand the realities of running a municipal department.
So Don, do you think we should go ahead and post this now in the, have we decided to go internal?
I, I think we let's, let's just post this, stick with the plan we had said, we'll toast it, we'll toast it, we'll post it internally and and if we can't find someone, I'm getting hungry. If we can't find someone, we'll go externally. All right.
Sergeant. You want to restrict?
No, I think we can eliminate that. I don't know what the degrees are that they have, but I think it can be eliminated. It just, just, you know, community experience.
I think it can all take, eliminate the sergeant and just put command experience.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so you want to do like two weeks for applications and then we see what we have and schedule and, okay.
Yeah.
I already have, as I said, three
Yes.
letters. I think they'll be followed by, as soon as we post this, chief is going to post it on Wednesday morning. My guess is that we'll have resumes before the weekend and
Okay.
So we're
Do we, do we have to?
We'll go from there.
Do we have to do a review of the present contract that the, that Chief Farnsworth is working under so we can do revisions and you know, review it, review it as necessary?
Yeah.
Should that be done now?
Is it not? Description in your packet. So I mean, if you want to take a look at that, that, the job description in your packet would typically, most of it would go into a contract with the new chief. By the way, in connection with that, I was informed today by the head of the union that they have decertified the IBPO and they have certified another union. And the result is that we will not be able to start collective bargaining until around the first week in March.
I would suggest that, there are things in the current chief contract that are specific to basically Chief Farnsworth. Way they're written, this is Quinn bill language, et cetera. That should be more generic depending on what chief has. I do think also that there were things that we were looking to bring in line with the handbook, vacation, things like that, number six days you can purchase. This is something that can be done, but I would ask Bob, because this is a bit of a negotiating thing on the part of the board, can this be done in an executive session? Because we're touring a contract as part of our negotiating.
Oh, yes. In fact, that for the board next week where we can dig into the existing contract and see where we want to make some changes. As you point out, the whole Quinn bill thing, it all depends again on what, what, what the board wants to do. But the old standard for Quinn was that it would be twenty percent or a bachelor's degree and twenty-five percent, used to be thirty percent for a master's degree, so you have to think about that as well.
I'm not sure it's twenty for the bachelor, but either way, the language is, it shouldn't be specific in this particular contract because basically you're following along with the Quinn statute, as you will. And I might just say, you might want to make that more generic as the Quinn bill. Educational incentive shall follow along with, and there is language in the patrol contract already for their payment. So to put a number in there, you might be giving twenty percent and it doesn't jive with the other ones. So things like that.
I think the whole thing has, the whole thing has to be looked at and gone through so that we, we're on board with it.
So that job description taken from the Farnsworth contract and also from the policies and procedures manual, one of those policies and procedures has to do with standards for, for being a chief. That is in your packet. I'll make sure I resend that to you. Though that next week when we have the exec session, you'll have it and we can see where changes are warranted.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Selectmen's goals.
Okay, um, and maybe you can pull those up again, Bob, because I'm not sure that everybody has them or.
They're in the packet as well.
Okay, well.
Okay, I can, I can try and bring those up too.
Okay, um, the, I took the, the statement that we agreed to last week, which was to effectively and efficiently manage Hamden's resources while maintaining, enhancing town services and mitigating increases in resident taxes. And then for the three headings, I put what, what those three things are in the first statement. So the first heading was maintaining resources, the second was maintaining services, managing resources, I'm sorry. The second was maintaining services and the third was mitigating tax increases. And then under each of those, I put what the tasks were that came through on lists. Okay, with a target date. The target dates can be revised, the task lists can be revised. I gave this to Mr. Markle and to, to John. I don't think it went through to Don. I don't understand why, but I don't think it did. I'm not sure. But John's suggestions were to implement, we, I hadn't included implementing the dispatch decision. So I put that in as a number, as a letter F under maintain services. And he suggested another title rather than mitigate tax increases. But I kept the mitigate tax increases because it goes back to the first statement to our general goal. But I added his suggestion as number F, which is implement financial strategies dash address revenues and expenditures. So we've got both in there.
Can you see these goals?
I can see them now. Yeah, yeah, I can. And then at the bottom, I added a, under target date, I put the four dates that, that I put a star and the town administrator will provide the board with quarterly reports on the progress of each of the progress of each of the action steps. And I gave the four dates that he would do the reporting, or whoever the administrator would be able to do the reporting. So, um, e- either you want to, I guess, take this, read it and, and, you know, either make more suggestions or say, you know, I don't like this or I do like that. Or we want to just adopt it and go forward and make changes in it as, as, as we use it and say, oh, this, this isn't really what we wanted to say, what we really wanted to say with this and we can, it can be a working document. So either way, it'll work.
And John sent in some thoughts as well.
I put both the Johns in.
Well, I have another, and Mary Ellen, thank you for sending it. I got that this morning and Don, I'm not sure if you've got it.
You got it too? Okay.
All right, the, I had a question on that board of health staffing. Is that, you meant, is it talking about?
You got, you had that on your list too. And isn't it here something? Yeah, finalize board of health staffing. That's for the, the health agent and the nurse. Are we going to keep the nurse for COVID through? When the COVID money runs out, are we going to keep her after that? When, anticipate that happening? It's just really to have a plan, but it isn't really any more staffing than we presently have right now. You did say that too. I'm sorry I didn't address that.
I think it's a good start to definitely, I mean, having everything itemized like this and some good dates is definitely, you know, the way to go, you know. the way to go. You know, it gives us targets right there. I think the tasks and steps. And I know, Don, you certainly would like to see one D, the Marcus communication come off that list pretty soon. Before, before we all retire.
The dates, the dates don't, there are many in 21 and not as many in 22. So, so people may think that they want to revise those. Or, but the dates aren't firm anyways. I mean, they're, the goal that you want to get to, but if you don't get to it, you say, okay, we need another month to do this. Um, but I think dates are, the dates are important because they cause you to focus on the task that you have to get accomplished by that time.
Number two, or one B, if you will, evaluate zooming cables. Is that going back to my thought about we should be focusing more on a zoom room for different boards?
Yep.
Okay, good.
And, and whether we wanted to go cable, you had said cable at one point. I don't know what that even means, but.
You know, we hear from, and I think you may have brought it up, we do hear from other, you know, constituents that, hey, that's great that your meeting's on, but we can't see this board and we can't see that board, we can't see that board. So I think I talked about last week. Auditorium for a consistent approach, people are going to appreciate that.
Right.
And if we can do it on somebody else's dime, people would really appreciate that.
You got that right. You got that.
I got an update today from the town accountant. We are still have an abundance of funds. So, John's suggestion of setting up the auditorium with a projector, projectors and so forth, and a screen is something we can.
Did we get, did we get a reimbursement from the second part? Who cares?
Yeah, we did. We did. We got 51,000 the first round, then we got 160, 163,000 from the second round. That's what, the Cliff did the accounting this afternoon to see what was left. So.
Alright. So we got about 200,000 left in there, right? I remember it's 460 or something like that.
Thing, thing is, no.
I thought it was five.
We have the money available. I'd have to ask for another round of money. So, yeah, we have a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay.
Still, we haven't spent, but of the money we've asked for, we're down to, I think, 39 or 40,000. So I can ask.
Does that include the school money, you know, they, that 25% of what they were going to ask for?
I thought it was, is that in our? What they were going to ask for.
No, we were going to fund 25% of whatever number they came up with. Yeah. Is that in the number you just gave us?
As I know.
Okay.
Alright, so where, where are we with the goals?
I think, I think we've got a great plan here. If Mary Ellen could incorporate some of these things and bring them back, I think we're, we're narrowing, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. And it's not, and it's not a train, which is great.
Tell me what I'm incorporating. I already put in, am I incorporating, John?
I know. All I have, all I have from you is the one you sent this morning with no changes. So if you want to like.
Okay, right. So I'll give you, I'll give you the other copy of it with the changes. Whatever I've incorporated.
Changes, right.
With the changes, right, right. Which they have two ways. So now that, it's good now because one, two, three, four, five. Each, each, each task has six categories under it. So that's good. It's consistency. Great.
We like even, we like even numbers. Very good.
That's what we like. It's all good.
Highway, nope. Okay, moving along. Budget review. The highway department is Mark on?
Mark is on.
Yes. Hello, good evening.
Hi, Mark.
Good evening. So, want to give us a rundown?
Uh, yeah, sure. Nothing, you know, nothing major to report. You, you may see, you'll see that there was a decrease in the department payroll account. That's because last year I had, I had figured in a part-time clerical for 10,000. So that outweighed the, in the math this year, that out, when I took that out, it outweighed the, you know, the, the raises for the department. So that, that was for that.
Okay, so the raises, the, the contracted raise are in there, right, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
And you put, you put 100,000 back into the paving?
Yes, I did.
Which we, which we took out last year. Okay. And so that's the re-increase there. Now, what about the, you got, you got two, you got, on your capital thing, you've got a couple of things there, but we're going to wait and see on those things you got. You know? On the FY22, under your capital plan that you did back, that was done back in, updated in 2020. You got like 150,000, but you don't, you don't have a warrant article for that, do you? Or?
No, we don't have. Yeah, Mark, myself, Bob and Larry Tuttle, the, the architect met. Again, we're trying to tighten up that number. What's it going to take? The most thing we have to tighten up is why did it go off the rails like that? And it's a short answer, pandemic. You know, just the shortage of materials. Don, you've seen that in your business as well. My business, it's incredible.
Oh, yeah.
But you know, I don't want to say people are taking advantage of what's happening here, but the best laid plans. So we may tighten up the spec a little bit, take out something that is maybe not terribly essential or can be added in down the road. I think, Mark, we've agreed that 150 is our worst case at this point. And maybe that might drop down. One thing is, is I think you heard from Dick Patel, 300 already has been appropriated and is in the bank. Some of that has been spent a minor amount for architect fees. But going forward with it, it's a supplemental appropriation to complete this project. If the town so wishes.
Okay. And that would be the, that would be the warrant article, right? And then, and then we would have the warrant article to receive the state aid. Right, okay.
Correct.
Alright. Anybody else, any questions? Questions or comments? Any other questions or comments for Mark? Mark, you have anything else to add?
I do not. Nope. Oh, yes, I can say, I, I do have one thing. I just was, I was notified today that our chapter 90 check is in the mail. So we'll be seeing. Seeing that shortly, hopefully.
The checks in the mail.
Boy, that's great. With everything I read about the hand in the post office, I'm a little worried, but so, Mark, where are we, where are we on snow and ice right now? We're going to be seeing a letter from you maybe in February. I know you got an event happening in tonight, tomorrow night, something like that I heard.
Oh.
Ballpark.
Yes, I, okay, I'm here. Sorry, there was a message came up on my screen. So our current balance on snow and ice is 51,080 and 35 cents. So we're in really good shape. I'm, I don't want to, I don't want to jinx myself, but mid-February, end of February, I may be approaching the board, but we'll just have to see what happens here. But for now, we are, we're in very good shape.
And the last thing would be what we did last year, for instance, replacing a couple of snow and ice related capital things. Do you see a need for that this year? Pretty much all the trucks have solid equipment for another year.
The only thing I can think of, John, is maybe a couple of replacement plows, not a cup, one, two, maybe, replacement plows for the, the highway trucks, the big trucks. Those are all, those are all original. Now, we've done the, you know, we've done the bodies and we've done the Sanders and we're in really good shape as far as that goes. The only thing I can think of, like I said, would be to, you know, at some point start replacing these, the, the plows.
Well, the good thing, like we talked about last year, Don, you recall, is by doing that, we extend the life of the truck. So the big, big ticket item. Yeah, so.
And what I, what I will say too is because of, because we're in very good shape with the stainless steel Sanders, future big truck requests will not be, will not be as much. Because in the past, we've outfitted those last two trucks with the all-season bodies. So we're, so we're probably going to see a decrease in, in those requests.
This, this is, this is recorded, Mark, so we got you on tape.
Well, it is.
Thank you, Mark. I, I, Mark, just on, I just, I think I could say on behalf of the committee in the town, you guys do a great job. We really appreciate everything you do. You're, you're usually right on top of everything and, and that's really helpful for everyone. And once again, thank you and thank you, men and women in the highway department for everything they do.
Very good. Thank you very much. I will do that.
Alright. Thank you. Building department. Is Wendell on?
Yes, sir.
Hi, okay. What's the deal?
So, basically the same thing as last year. Level services, no raises. And we kind of win out hours. Well, as you requested, you know, until the Collins report's done or whatever, you guys are, are doing there.
Yeah.
You cut down the hours. Oh, I see. You shifted the hours to the stormwater budget, basically.
Right.
So, yeah, so do they have to have an, an, an account number for that? Do they have, are they going to pay those three hours or is that just three less hours?
So those are. So those hours last year were added on to Karen's to handle any stormwater clerical. And what Karen really only uses is about an hour of that time. Just backed out that other. That other amount.
Alright.
Mary Ellen, you guys were asking where we could back stuff out if possible. So.
That's nice of you.
Okay. Here we are. Alright, any other questions, comments? We don't have any. Again, thank you. Thank, thank you for. How, how are the inspections going with this pandemic?
Fortunately, we've been able to do a lot using technology and the governor's enabled us to do a lot of inspections. So, you know, it's really, it's kind of jerked us right into the 21st century. I, a lot of them have to see in person though.
Obviously, I'd also like to comment, you know, a sad loss in the inspection department with the passing of Dennis Chafee. Passed like a good man and certainly a right-hand man to you, Wendell, and our condolences to his family. You know, on your, on their loss.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, Wendell.
Thanks, Wendell.
Have a good evening. Go. What we have next is the selectmen's reports.
Well, planning has canceled their meeting for the rest of the month. No agenda items. Again, same thing. We're still looking to see acceptance of Kibbe Lane is going to be on the warrant, presented for the warrant this year. I don't believe there's any bylaw changes planned. Joanne may have reached out to Bob about that, nothing at this point. And I think, Don, wasn't there something about stormwater or possibly or some updates maybe on that?
Yeah, I thought they were going to have a stormwater bylaw upgrade, but maybe they're, maybe they're going to wait now. So, alright, anything else?
I spoke to the library. I spoke to the library and they were pleased with the decision on the book drop. And they were pleased that we were, we would allow them to reserve the, the auditorium for Thursdays for, for meetings going forward after COVID has been, has resolved itself, whenever the heck that happens. The board of health is busy with COVID, busy with COVID, busy with COVID. They are in talks with Wilbraham relative to vaccines and setting up some kind of a system. But that hasn't been finalized. People are encouraged to go to M A C O V I D to access information on vaccinations if, if they so choose. If they want to use that access point, and they can register online. They are not registering, they are in level, in phase one. Is it phase, they call phases, the first level one? People right now, but they will be going to level two, they think in February. So that's what I know about those two things.
That, that was my next question. Thank you. What's the status of T W B? Were we checking with the, the lease on the school district, Tom?
School district, great. We're waiting for the school district on that.
Have we?
And trying to, I think we're trying to develop some, some, some kind of joint plan with Wilbraham and us through a vaccination center. We've got to speak to the school, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so what do we, we'll move, anything else? So we'll move on to town administrative report.
Okay, we have an impact bargaining session scheduled for tomorrow. This afternoon, I sent to the board an updated list of items that the dispatchers would like to put on the table. When you read it, I think you will agree that we need to talk about this in the executive session. But I certainly would not feel comfortable agreeing or disagreeing with some of these requests. So I have an exec session set up for next week. I could add one where we could review the additions that the dispatch union has sent out today. I did send you copies of that. I don't know if you received them. I would have, yes. So they said to me today in that mailing that, look, if you need more time, we're okay with that. So I'm thinking tomorrow, we'll, we'll postpone our session for a week, which will give the board a chance to review what they are requesting and make some decisions.
Sounds good.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, secondly, you know that the interim police chief has assumed his duties. The MVP session held on January the 21st was outstanding. It took a lot of time, but I thought it was excellent. I did ask them for a copy of the recording. And today they sent me a link, which I, I passed on to the selectmen to view that long session. And also encouraged going to session on the 28th. That's just coming Thursday. When it will be continued from 9:00 AM until 12:00. There's going to be some very good work coming out of this for the town. And as well as the opportunity to get some state funding to address some of the severe weather hazards that we face. Our tree warden reports that 95% of the dead and hazardous trees have been removed. So the extraordinary monies that were held down meeting for two years have funded success.
Have they been all expended? Or when you say 95%, is there anything left of the extra 100?
I don't know how much we have left. Have to check with, when Cliff comes out with his latest report. I don't know that, he didn't tell me that he needs more money or that he has expended all of it. So. Also, I spoke to the chair of the, of the Wilbraham Select Board. Also, uh, I spoke to the chair of the, of the Wilbraham Select Board. He called Don, Don asked me, because he was busy, if I would call Mr. Russell. I did. And he is recommending or suggesting that the two towns join together for a COVID clinic uh, where vaccinations could take place. In a conversation I had today with the town administrator in Wilbraham, they are going to recommend that we do it at TWB. What um, I guess that would be a question for the.
Do it what?
Pardon? Do, have a vaccination clinic?
Do, oh. Where?
At Thornburg's School. For both towns.
Okay, all right. Yep.
One, one of the questions would be, can they do a clinic when they have children?
So you're going to speak to the super?
Well, I, that's, you know, these are questions, I guess, what happened.
You have to resolve that because you can't do certain things. I know that with, with me have children in the building.
Yeah. Well, for no objection, I'll just pursue that with the intention intended. And uh, get some answers to that. But uh, I talked with, uh, well, I talked to Jane, who has talked with Lori McCool. They're uh, in favor of having a clinic locally. Governor has said he's going to open up at Eastfield on the first of February. Um, but having local, a local clinic as well seems to make sense. So.
Well, if that doesn't work out, I mean, they still have Memorial School as a municipal building without the school concern. I mean, that's always out there. So there are options.
Mr. Russell said he would like to see this operational by the twenty-second of February. I'm going to respond to them that we really need to push that up some a lot. Get it going early February, as opposed to uh, waiting for the twenty-second. Um, well, again, we've gone over the police chief posting. Um, I did request from attorney Pacula a, a press release. So I don't have it yet, but it's been requested. Uh, I mentioned to you that police union negotiations cannot start until the first week in March because the IPBO has been decertified. And the new union, which is the New England Police Benevolent, Benevolent Association, has been certified. Uh, John suggested that we share the financial folder on the OneDrive with the advisory committee. I've been in touch with them and I've been in touch with um, Entrez Computer. Uh, they have set that up, I, I understand, this afternoon. So that the ten subfolders and only those ten subfolders on our OneDrive, which have uh, the budgets from fiscal two nineteen, two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-two plus capital, plus debt, plus financial policies and so forth. All of that would be shared with the advisory committee. Also, the East of the River Chamber of Commerce, I believe I sent that out to you. They have invited representatives from the town uh, to uh, a session that, uh, on Zoom that they're having on February the eighteenth, three to four PM. Uh, they're asking town officials as well as selectmen to join in a business roundtable. So I did send this to you, I believe, uh, by email, but I'll make sure, given the problem we had with email the last couple of days, I will make sure that you have it. And that is the report. Again, that uh, municipal vulnerability program on the twenty-eighth, I, anything like it was on the twenty-first. It was excellent and very worthwhile, even if, no, it wasn't just about municipal vulnerability in Hampton. They had material there also about changing weather patterns and so forth and, and uh, how that seems to be occurring across the country and certainly having uh, implications for all of New England.
I think and Bob and I also attended the MMA annual meeting last week as well. A little different than going out to the Hines, as I think both of us have done in the past, but still some valuable workshops there. And Don, this may have been something in the past, you might have stopped in a couple of sessions back in the day. So again, just hearing, hearing comments from other municipalities, how they deal with things, you know, always valuable.
It is.
Now, you don't have to till new ground every time when somebody else, to be honest, has already paid their legal fees and getting something reviewed. Great.
All right. Anything else to come before the board? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
All right.
Stay on for a minute, selectmen.
Yep.
I want to make sure the others are off. There's been another death. Karen's mother died.
Oh.
Who, who, who died?
No.
Mother died.
It's not coming through.
Um, Karen. You mentioned, you mentioned that.
Yep.
Chaffee.
Yeah. Yeah.
His wife died.
Yep. Oh, geez.
So I just found that out today. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
All right. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.